If I can have your attention, I'd like to call the June 19th meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here. And first, we will have the invocation and pledge. And Anne, I think it's your turn.
Heavenly Father, we honor thy presence in our lives and thank you for the many blessings as you have bestowed upon us. Our world is in constant turmoil, and we know that our strength and our refuge comes from you. Give us wisdom today as we make decisions on behalf of our community. Be with us, the leaders of our country, as they make decisions that affect so many people in this world. Help us all work together to, for peace among all men. Please protect the ones that are protecting our country and allowing us to have the educational system we have and the freedom to make the decisions that we do. Lead us, guide us, and direct us this evening as always. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a force and agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy, all in favor. Unanimous. Okay. Next, we have a rather large consent agenda. I hope everyone's had a chance to look at. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Anne, all in favor. Unanimous. Public participation, we have none. Okay. And next, we have presentation and discussion items, first being local school council annual reports with Joey Perkel.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I will give the local school council annual reports for, this is our second group of elementary schools, and you can see those schools listed that I'll be giving the report for. All of these schools met the minimum of their four times with, as always, most of them meeting more than that. You can see the common topics that these local school councils discuss. This is just a general list. You're very much aware of the topics that local school councils discuss as you attend a lot of those meetings and read their minutes throughout the year. We have some recommendations from three of these, three of these elementary schools. The first one being Chattahoochee Elementary School. They asked that careful consideration for equity among schools should be a continual focus for school improvements. It is the hope of the Chattahoochee Local School Council that the school improvements, which are slated to take place as a result of the bond election, will provide much-needed improvements to our campus. Their second request was a continued focus on providing resources for advanced content courses in elementary schools, as well as STEM or STEAM resources and training. Two recommendations from Kelly Mill. The first one being consider adding a full-time SRO for each elementary school and add a deputy for morning and afternoon traffic dedicated to the Kelly Mill and Shamley Gap intersection. The deputy at the bus entrance is great, but an additional one is needed for car traffic entering and exiting Shamley Gap from Kelly Mill. And then finally, two recommendations from Silver City. The first one, the local school council would like to see a traffic turnaround added to the Silver City Elementary School parking lot. This would enable cars to exit the last parking row and exit the parking lot via the middle row. And additionally, the Silver City Elementary Local School Council would like to see foreign language introduced back into Forsyth County elementary schools. And those are all of the recommendations for this second group of elementary school, local school council reports. We appreciate the schools and their work that they do with the local school councils. Also listed are all the chairpersons. We greatly appreciate our parents that serve as chairpersons for local school councils and their dedication and work to continuously improving their schools. And this concludes the second group of elementary schools' local school council report.
So out of the 11 schools, those were just the three that sent back recommendations?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. So that concludes that.
All right. I believe you're next, too, aren't you?
I am. We have two final Inspire presentations this afternoon. Our first Inspire presentation is from Jennifer Bailey. She was the assistant principal at Coming Elementary School. And following Jennifer will be Bob Connor-Roelly, the assistant principal at West Forsyth High School. Both of these folks did a phenomenal job, and I will go ahead and ask Jennifer to come forward and present to you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. I was really excited about this presentation, so I'm going to keep it really short, even though there's a lot of details in it. But to start off with, I titled it Tier One Instruction because that is the focus. I am the assistant principal over kindergarten, first, and second grade, so I'm kind of going to walk you through the big picture of what we looked at and then break it down just a little bit. And looking at Tier One Instruction, the main focus is how are all our students being instructed? So we wanted to look back and make sure that all students were being exposed to current research-based best practices in all subject areas at Coming. And we wanted this to take place through professional development with our teachers and collaboration, and then feedback along the way, as well as looking at data through the data team process. So I'm going to kind of walk you through where the baseline was of where we started, and I'll also talk about a little help use running records. And just so you, just to make sure that you're aware of what a running record is, that is the tool that we use to measure student, the rate of fluency and the comprehension skills in reading instruction. So we started by realizing that we kind of had a lot of students moving from Tier One all the way to Tier Three into the SST process. And teachers were referring them, so basically saying that these students needed some type of intervention. The question that we began to ask is what kind of instruction, instruction are we giving all students? So we kind of wanted to go back to the drawing board to make sure that all students were receiving best practices according to what we know as current research-based instruction. We also used our data from the gaps, full gaps that we had in 2012. At that time, I was not at Coming, but I'm proud to say I was a part of a major incredible results that they received. However, two of the things that stuck out for the recommendations were based on Tier One instruction, and that was differentiated instruction was not as evident, and small group instruction was not as evident either. So we wanted to utilize those two areas in this project. Then we decided to do a walkthrough, an administrative walkthrough, to look for what Tier One practices are taking place in our kindergarten, first, and second grade classrooms, the general education classrooms. And the main focus was looking at guided reading. Are our teachers implementing research-based guided reading practices? And so for the first walkthrough in the fall, we found that 35% of our teachers were implementing guided reading accurately. So we were excited to find that much, but of course, we wanted to see better improvement there. We also looked at our running record data for kindergarten, first, and second grade. And although this data shows the end-of-the-year goal that the students are supposed to meet, you can see that we had a lot of progress that we needed to make. 96% of students in kindergarten were in the does-not-meet category. So we wanted to hit it hard. So then this kind of is where I kind of created the school improvement plan to hit reading instruction. We go back to the drawing board with the pyramid of intervention, and we looked at what all students should have access to in the educational setting. And as you can see, it's very broad, but we decided to focus in on reading and specifically guided reading to make sure that our students are reaching, reaching the highest level achievement there. We created a professional development calendar that went for the year, focusing in on guided reading and best practices throughout the year. And along the way, we had teachers that were able to observe one another and give each other feedback, as well as administrative observations and feedback through that. So we saw a lot of growth just in the process and in the way that our teams communicated and collaborated. We also decided to implement and kind of narrow down some research-based reading instructional programs. So we looked at what phonics program all of our students in kindergarten, first, and second grade had access to, and we brought in a new one, SRA Imaginate Phonics. And then we also implemented the Level Literacy Intervention Program by Fontis and Brown. And this program focused on at-risk students that are not reading at grade level. The teachers that taught the Level Literacy Intervention Program were support staff, the title, and the EIP staff. So we created a basically daily schedule with a guided reading block for these three grades. And in that one-hour period of time, we had support staff go into the classroom. And so not only was the general education teacher conducting a small group guided reading lesson, but so for the support staff. So on any given day, every child would have been able to read to at least two teachers in the building, if not more, depending on their level of need. We were very excited about this, and it actually worked with as many teachers and many schedules as we have. So here are the results that we received by the end of the year. We had our mini gaps back in November for 2013. And while I wasn't there in the beginning initially, the administrative team had implemented along the way so many professional development tools and initiatives to make sure that we were putting the recommendations in place. So we were excited to see that one of the commendations was we were observed to have an increased use of differentiated instruction and that small group instruction was in place. We also conducted a spring walkthrough in March before testing began, and we were excited to find 55% of our general education classrooms in kindergarten, first, and second grade were implementing the guided reading model that we used during professional development. And then finally, this is the most exciting piece, our running record data for our students. This is once again the fall, and then you can compare it here to the summer. And it's amazing that we saw such a growth in our meets category, but overall, all of our students went to the exceeds category, and that was our largest category in kindergarten, first, and second grade for their reading levels by the end of the year. So in wrapping it up, we obviously will continue these initiatives next year and kind of tweak some areas that we need to refine, but we really want to push and focus in on differentiation and then looking at some math strategies to implement, as well as using one of the new assessments with our students school-wide.
When you're talking about guiding reading, you're talking about one-on-one. Is that just to help the kids read the words, but also comprehension?
It's all that. And it's usually a setting of three to six students. So while a teacher would have great skills at teaching a student one-on-one, what makes it so effective is that if they're implementing what we know is research-based practices with that many students, that the students can all be reading at one time and receiving instruction in that way.
Okay. That's impressive.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Connor-Roelly. I'm the assistant principal at West Forsyth High School, and my Inspire project is trying to solve, or we tried to solve, the EOCT puzzle. And as you know, last year, when we received our EOCT scores for coordinate algebra, they were not what we're used to seeing. It was sort of a shock to our students and our parents and our math, math teachers especially, since we've done so well in the past, especially in Math I. So being the administrator over the math department, this was just a natural project for me. And along with this, we also used the same model with analytic geometry this year. So everything that we've done here, and I'll go over some data as we move along. So our data for EOCT was 56% of our students passed or exceeded the coordinate algebra EOCT, and only 4% exceeded. So we were not pleased with that at all. So we knew we had to do something. We had to sort of rally the troops and put the pieces of the puzzle together, and we put together a plan, and we started to go ahead and do that. With our data, we met pre-planning, and we started, we put our SMART goals together, which we do every year. And normally, you look to do a 3% or 5% increase in percentage, and we went ahead and decided to do 6. So we wanted our students to be able to go from 56% to 62%. And then we also wanted to go from 4% exceeds to 10% exceeds by the end of the school year. That was, that was our target goal, our SMART goal for our math department and our teachers. With that, we had quite a few action strategies and interventions. The first thing that we did, I'm also over the master schedule at the high school, so I'm responsible for teacher assignments, rooms, and so forth. We created common content planning, so all of the teachers that teach like subjects have planning together. That was huge. We wanted to have everybody working together pulling in the same direction. Those meetings are offered coordinate algebra on Excel or PowerPoint every Thursday. I attend those meetings. I think it was important to be there to understand, you know, my background. I was not a math teacher, but I am over the math department, so I felt like I had to be involved in that planning and that process. And what we do there is we do lots of collaboration. There's unit design and lesson creation. That's where we do our data teams. We, they put together common assessments and quizzes. They monitor student progress, which is real important. There's a monthly newsletter that I'll share here in a little bit that I think was, was real, they did real well with. And then we also have a representative that was on our, the DMR team that Carl Muster put together, that we sent to meet here. And again, we're all working smarter and more efficient when we work together. Part of that action and strategy and intervention was we had a teacher participate with other teachers throughout the county, middle school included. If you were teaching coordinate algebra in some form in middle school or high school, they met here. I attended those meetings as well. We had, we got a lot of great work out of those meetings. We prioritized needs. We set some SMART goals of our own. There was a lot of sharing of activities and lessons and strategies. And I think once you pull all that collective talent together, it was amazing what we were able to come back to the schools with. And I think that, that really helped our results. And it gave the teachers a little bit of sense of confidence, because from last year to this year, the math teachers were reeling a little bit. They were frustrated. They didn't know what to do. And they're probably one of the hardest-working groups you'd ever see, and they're very data-driven, so they know where their kids should be. Hats off to Carl for putting that together as well. We also did the same thing for analytic geometry. Aaron Zicka had put together the same, same plan, and we met. We had a math teacher come for analytic geometry, and we did the same thing for that as well. Some of the other action strategies and interventions were in those common planning sessions, we put together unit pacing guides, and they're specific by the day, what the homework will be. The math department plans out their lessons by the day. So when we have snow days and ice days, they get real nervous because they, it throws them off their plan. But those are, that's all done. That's an example of one of the pacing guides. We also keep the minutes, and that's, that's a running tally of some of the minutes all the way through the end of September, what's talked about, what we're heading to do. We also have a monthly newsletter, and this is, this, this was really something that we're going to try to push into all of the departments. And basically, what they do in those meetings is the beginning of every unit, the coordinate algebra teachers and the analytic geometry teachers got together, and they put together what the unit was going to look like, when they were going to have the test, what the explanation was, important dates, any kind of supplies the students might need, its learning, what will be linked to its learning, so the parents can pull that stuff up at home, when the extra help sessions would be either during school or after school, and when the teacher would be available, if there's resources, and the teacher contact information. So everything in the middle of that newsletter is done together, and then the teacher goes ahead and they personalize it with their welcome and their address. And that goes home to the beginning of every unit. And that has been a very positive, proactive piece for communication, especially with ninth grade parents. A lot of these students are ninth grade, and the anxiety of being a ninth grader along with knowing that the math can be a problem, this went a long way. And also, we talked in our PAC meetings about TEES. This is putting the exemplar model for communication for teachers, I believe. There's other things that will go into that, but our math teachers are very excited, so they're hoping that they will get some exemplary checks from us.
Did you email it, or did you?
Yeah, we emailed it. And actually, the biggest part of putting that together is getting the email chain organized and getting it efficient and getting it out to everybody. And once they do that, it runs like clockwork, and it's, we've gotten lots of good feedback. And it just puts everybody at ease because they know what to expect. Another piece, and I've always believed this, is, you know, traditional students take math tests, paper, pencil, and then they write the answer down. They take the test that way in class. But what we wanted to do this year is we wanted kids to take the EOCT at a computer in front with all of the bells and whistles that they have to negotiate with the, the science boards between them and time. So Aaron Zicka created some online computer-based practices, and we went through all 10 of those units. And our biggest challenge was computer space and hotspots and those kinds of things. But our kids were taking math practice quizzes for the EOCT on a computer. So we have another piece of the puzzle that we thought we needed to solve, because normally it's paper, pencil. This slide is out of order, and I apologize for that, but we prioritized our needs. We were focusing on exponential functions and understanding interpreting word problems. Those were two things that we, when we dug through the data, that we really needed to focus on for our kids to improve in EOCT. We do daily warm-up practice questions. This is an example of two of the questions. That's every day, and they put some challenge questions in there for the students that are trying to be, to hit the exceeds, exceeds mark. And again, in those content planning meetings, the teachers put those together, and all the teachers use the same, same questions. This is a student course success plan that we use in all of our subjects at West. And extra help is a big portion. We want the students to actually pass the course, and they have to learn the material or they're not going to perform well on the EOCT. But we use this success plan right in, right around the October mark, and we actually utilize the early release days. And the teacher, any student that's in jeopardy of failing the course, there's a two-student piece and there's a teacher piece. And so the teachers are, all the teachers at, at West use this success plan. And it gives the student and the parent an idea of what's, what's available for help before and after school during instructional focus. We have an extension, extension program, which is after school, which our graduation coach puts stats together to get students there that need the extra help, and then student case managers. So that plan is designed, if a student's not passing the course, they're probably going to have, they're probably going to struggle in the EOCT. So that starts right away, end of September, beginning of October. And that's actually done in all courses, not just math.
There's no reason for anybody?
Correct. And so either those meetings are done in person, they can be done over the phone, they can be done via email, but that plan is on place for everybody. Some of the resources that we utilized were the study guides and released items from the DOE, which was, which were important, and we got those from Beth Keifer and her group, so we appreciate them. But they put together the practice test, the sponge activities, the daily warm-ups, and so we utilized that information. Some other resources, what we started to do was online assessment creation training. Obviously, our teachers are still working on being more proficient with its learning in the math community, and I've learned this year, Walt's resources and Triumph Online, so we use those as well. So those are some of the things that we use. And again, all the pieces of the puzzle that we started to work on come, came together. And our data improved. We met our goals. We went from 56% to 66% for meets and exceeds. So we went up 10 points instead of 6. So everybody was excited about that.
Really?
And they went from 4% to 10% in exceeds. So we were very excited for that. I just have one last data piece, and again, we were tracking the students that took coordinate algebra last year. They rolled into analytic geometry, and again, that was a new animal for us. And those same students that only hit the 56 and the 4% this year in, basically the same pool of students, they had 67% of those students met and exceeded analytic geometry, and 16% exceeded. So we kept the same model, working with that same group of students that we rolled the data out for.
So will you do it next year?
Absolutely.
Because now their parents expect it.
Absolutely. And it also helped our CCR, CCRPI profile. Our school went from 78% exceeds in meets last year for all EOCTs to 85%.
Wow.
So every little bit counts, and it helps and it moves us along.
Are the teachers feeling better now, too?
They are. Part of putting that together is just sort of easing everybody's anxiety, students and teachers. We have the talent in the classroom with the students, and we have the talent in front of the students. We just had to find a way to pull everybody together to get it done the right way. So.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
Okay. Next is school attendance lines and zoning impacts with Mr. Tim Amerson. How are you?
Thank you. Good evening.
Do you cross-eyed after doing this? Are you cross-eyed?
After doing all these things, day after day.
Hardly. Let's see.
You need to explain this a little. I was like, okay. I need some help.
All right. Real quickly, about the middle of each month, I get the email from the planning technician Forsyth County Planning Development Office. It says, here are the list of items that have been submitted. They go from the conditional use permits, home occupation permits, into our zoning requests. We sort out all those that are residential in nature, and we then identify the location for that back to a specific school location. And I believe the one I'm working on tonight was actually coming from Kelly Mill. A little too fast there. Looks like I got cut off on this sheet after all. The one that I put on here for exhibit is the one that's known as ZA 3693. Keep track of all these zoning numbers there. It's from Peachland Homes. It'd be for 136 residential units. And by the time we put our little formula that we came up with, and we've actually come back and taken our old census data-driven formula for how many elementary, middle, high school students each residential unit will create, we've gone back and created a new format that says, we have an area that's mapped specifically for our counts that we did in the south area, and that's south of Georgia 20, east of 400. We have a west area, which is west of 400, south of Georgia 20. We have a central area, which is anything north of Georgia 20, south of 369. And then north area is all the area from Highway 369 north to Dawson County. So those are our four geographical areas. Start drilling a little bit more for those areas that are higher developments at this time.
It's greatly appreciated they made that change.
But again, so what we do is we go here, and we'll say there's going to be 37 new elementary students at Kelly Mill. 18 of those will go to Ottawa Middle School, and 19 will be at Forsyth Central when this development's completed. Rough location for this is Johnson Road, Shamley Gap Road area. Close this one and go to an actual form. So then I put this into a database to create, this to transmit to the county. They don't like our long form that we post on the website with all the other information repeated about the developer and everything. But basically, here again, what we've done is created a chart for each of the schools that are affected. So here we tell them that Kelly Mill has capacity by the state standards for 1,125 students. Their current enrollment's 1,236. Therefore, right now, there are 111 students over capacity. There's 136 new units in this new development. Again, we'll create the 37, 18, and 19 split between elementary, middle, and high school. Then we go on to tell them that there were six previous zonings that we're tracking, and right now, we've used a six-year span to try to track those as open and approved over the last six years.
So you bumped that up a little bit, then?
Yeah. We used to be running about four years, and as the recession came and everything went into a lull, we kind of lifted that slide up. But right now, we're calculating everything post-2007 on up through 2014. We do have a few that were older than that, and the reason we keep tracking those is because they have recently come back for a zoning condition amendment that changed the balance of the residential units and things like that. So we now have said that project's started again, and it's active, and we need to put it back on the radar map. So we reactivated that into the formula totals. Anyway, as we go through that, we say there's six previous zonings. And of course, you see that the elementary, middle school students will differ a little bit, because now we got 225 elementary students from the other six developments, and 132 middle, and up to 186 at the Forsyth Central. And of course, Central may be pulling in students that were identified in the Coming zoning. So some of those students come from the other schools that feed into Central in the long run. And of course, then we say if those students, along with the new students from the 136 new homes come in with where we're at right now, if all that happens today, that that basically puts a school at 133.2% of capacity. So they're a little bit over capacity at this point, as well as Ottawa getting at capacity. And you can see that Central is still just under the 100% or full capacity. We now are able to tell them that Brandywine Middle School, number 10, and High School, number seven, are punted. We just don't tell them.
Can we go back to that graphic for a moment? That's the format that they like, because it's kind of detailed. You do the, are you going to go the nicer format?
Yeah, I was going to go the next one that has the same data table on it. Just has more of the user information when we publish this on our website. So you can see just how similar they are when I bring them up, that it gives you the same categories of current school, current capacity, current enrollment, followed by the number of new units for that subdivision, and the student impact it would have, previous zonings, and all that information. Again, this Word format now posted on our website tells the people who the developer is, where the location is, some of that information.
So you do this for every zoning?
Do this for every zoning.
I've been doing it this way for many, many years.
For years. We used to get updates all, like every meeting. And we used to have all kinds of them that would come in and point some information.
How much time do you spend on that a month?
Like I said, depends how many of the residential zonings come in on request. Usually, we don't have more than about seven to eight.
Well, in the last few years. Well, in the last few years, there hasn't been any.
There was a long drop period between 2008 to 2012, and 2012, that all started. But you can go back here and see that some of these I've been mapping since 2000 here on the Big Creek screen. When I put them in the grayed out area, it means, okay, they're beyond my window that I'm watching for these to happen. These have probably been built out since 2000, we would assume. But again, we don't go back out and count each of these and map them right back. Of course, one of the difficult things is always, we see it by developer's name. I did try to do a thing where I started trying to track the subdivision, just never know when it was going to open, what the subdivision name was going to be, and go back and look for those things.
Do you see MS Property Investment, Vaughn Drive? We just crossed that out, and we're Brookwood Elementary School right there.
Did we put a zero on it yet?
Yeah.
We have a lot more kids than the 37 kids it was going to create.
Yeah.
But anyway. So like I said, this is just a long-running sheet, so again, I have this running record of what happened back from 2000 before, all the way through the ones we've received. Just kind of be able to go back and look as needed.
Do you try and keep an anticipated date of when you can't, you can't, you don't know, there's just, you know, when they're going to be built?
When the zoning request comes in, they may break ground this year, and they may be doing it for tax purposes. We saw a lot of that during the big boom right before the 2000 bust, where folks were doing agricultural property zoning to rez three, getting it set to where they could now enter the marketplace. 2009, 2010, they were reversing it back to agricultural, because they didn't want to pay property taxes on all the individual lots they had now created. So you have some of that happen during the transition.
This goes to them before they actually vote on it, so they have that information.
This sheet, they give us about nine days to respond to them. I'll try to do it first thing when I see it.
Can you bring back up your other charts? Because Darla brings up a good point. You've been doing this format for many, many years, as long as I've been watching this. You've been sending the, on our website, we have the Pretty format, and then you've been sending this. And Darla asked, they have this before they vote. And it is clear to me that while you send it to the county, the county does not disperse it to their staff. So the county planning commissioner does not see all of this data, and the county commissioners does not see all this data. So as much as you've been doing the work, and schools have been doing their side, it is not being used on the county side to its fullest extent.
They need to address that.
We have brought it, we've been in the meeting where we brought it up, and they, you know, choose not to. So now we'll just do it publicly.
And when it has been brought up, they've had questions, tried to clarify what they don't understand of the, I guess, cumulative totals of the current school population to the new development, to the existing developments that are in the works, to create that 133% that you see there. So like I said, when I get to that line, I'm actually counting how many students existing, how many new students are coming in, and how many else were being planned for before that, and then divided to create that percentage.
They've even said in the meetings, geez, I wish the school system would give us the percent over capacity this is. And they turned around and said, yeah, maybe we should ask for that.
Right, and we've been giving it two or three years.
And it's right there in black and white. So Mr. Amerson's been doing his part.
And again, like I said, there was issues with the formats that they had been playing with on what they gave, wrote up in the commission report. So like I said, we had been putting this in the Excel spreadsheet for them, so that way they could pull the raw data back out of it and put it in their format as they needed it, without all the other stuff that was showing up in the Word document we've created, so they could pull the numbers.
One thing I was wondering if we could help to clarify, though, with the, this one's not as obvious as some, but for the next, for funding approved, it always has it on there, and they do, they definitely have that on there. The problem is, you know, yes, when we open a new school, we often obviously redistrict the schools around and shift into, you know, backfill into that new school. But sometimes the zoning, for example, could be something way down in South Forsyth. And so you'll do the impact statement, and it'll say, you know, funding for new, middle, elementary, and high. But the funding we might have might be for a school that is going to in no way directly impact that particular zoning. But when they read it, they'll leave that in there, and it'll say, yeah, they're funding for new elementary. But that new elementary may have no connection whatsoever. So is there a way that we could, I mean, we don't know for sure till we go through redistricting and get to that point, but still, it implies that that school is going to be relieved, when in many cases, it's not the truth at all.
And this, again, was one of the things I was questioning, because again, like I said, if there's a community up on North End, I've got elementary 14, Brandywine now, showing as an approved school. I was torn on the situation and saying, yes, there's a Brandywine as our next school, and yes, it is, you know, funded now, versus saying, you know, to be announced for another new school up that way, or to list something like elementary school number 10 that would be on that north side as not funded. So there's always that sort of question, how you really, really should answer that.
Right. It should almost be next school opening in the vicinity or something.
Because the developers say, look, they've got, not only are they going to, but they have funding for a school, it's named, but that's not going to help, you know.
There needs to be a sense.
Coming Elementary, for example, when they were overcrowded, Brandywine's not going to help them.
And, you know, we do have our proposed future sites that we've somewhat identified in the five-year plan. That pretty well covers most of the districts if it would, you know, be close enough to associate with them. I mean, you know, like I said, I could always go in there and put a East Forsyth High School if it's a question in the north region, and say, but no, this school's not funded, but that is something we could put on those reports.
Right, I would think so.
Instead of saying, high school number seven is funded, but will have no effect on your zoning.
Exactly, it won't help us at all.
Because the county continues, if you go back to that chart, they keep, the county will say, well, this new zoning will all give us 12 new elementary, and 20 new middle, and 10 high. They leave off the percent over capacity, and then they'll say, funding for new school, yes. So it makes it sound like it's no impact or very minimal, when in fact, it could be going to an overcrowded school with no future school plans in the near. So, you know, data is wonderful, but it can manipulate it to anybody's advantage, so.
All righty.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Well, part of that item was supposed to be, when we added that in the work session, was, we were, partly because we wanted to get, you know, regular updates from Mr. Amerson, but was also to talk about some other things that we were looking on our side, that I was working on, if you remember back when we did that in April. But I think that's better, I've talked to Mr. Amerson, I'm working with the county planning, I went over some with Nancy today. I think that's still, it's very data-driven, I'm waiting some more information from Mr. Carlyle. I think it's better suited for a work session. So we've got a couple of work sessions coming up that are a little different, so it might be a better time to do that, because it's just very detailed.
Okay. That'll be fun.
Thank you.
And next, we have Facilities Construction Update. We're very excited to see you.
Same here. Good evening. We are pleased to report on the progress of the design and construction of several projects for the 2014 bond program. Such, we've created the attached matrix, which gives you the progression of the project and the transition milestone timeline as we progress from design to the general contractor and opening, and the forecasted opening, along with the summary status. So for the first page, you see the various high school projects, and we're pleased to report for the three major high school addition renovation projects for north, central, and south. We have received eight design proposals for each of those. In each of those cases, evaluation committees were established from the administrative stakeholders, as well as central office stakeholders, to objectively review those initial proposals. And we're pleased to report in each of the cases, the committees for each of the three schools have met, and we have shortlisted the highest two-ranked firms, and they will be presenting their best and final initial conceptual designs the first week in July. The other significant high school project that we have made progress on is the stadium, concessions, and restrooms project. The design is complete. The project has been advertised in progress for the required 28 days. We had a pre-bid meeting with five pre-qualified, or I should say qualified, general contractors this past week. We look forward to those bids at the end of this month, with construction starting in early July for an opening prior to the first home football game in September, with the project being substantially complete. On the second page, you'll see the middle schools. We have eight of the middle schools that are going to be undergoing the vestibule security upgrades. And again, the design is complete, and we are in construction on three of those projects already. The other five will shortly follow in the next few days. Again, all eight will be complete prior to the first day of school opening. The other significant middle school project is Middle School 10, the new project. The design process has begun. Schematic review has taken place, again, with the input of central office stakeholders. The same applies for Brandywine Elementary School. In each of those cases, you know, I'm pleased to report, we've got excellent prototypes in place that are existing, very cost-effective, proven, to the same time for continuous improvement. There's really four major trends that we see developing since the last new facility's been constructed, and that's in rapidly changing information technology, so we're making those design enhancements and adjustments. Security, safety enhancements. Flexible collaborative spaces, we see a lot of that trend developing. That input has been shared, input from the stakeholders, we're incorporating that. And lastly, energy efficiency. Things like LED lighting have progressed in the past few years, and we're incorporating that into our designs for both the new little school and the new elementary school.
Well, Brian, it won't be the same plan as Whitlow and the one that we used to have, the one level.
Yes, you start with a prototype, site-adapted for geotechnical conditions. And then we'll be making some modifications, primarily in the four areas that I just reviewed.
Right, I know that we used that one, and then we used the two-story thing that Sharon and Hawk Creek are, but it seems like we end up with that same one that Whitlow and Silver City, it was, Song, he.
The one-story.
The one-story.
Yes.
That was, we'll need another one-story.
On the last page, you'll see the eight firms, the architectural firms that were in competition, and we will continue to use those firms in the expanded pool as we move through some of the miscellaneous elementary school projects.
The two that are chosen, like, do they now have input from our high school that says, this is what we're looking for, this is not, I mean, they are going to get input before they come with their final plans?
Yes, absolutely. You know, the beauty of that process was even those firms that were the highest ranked had very creative solutions in each of the cases, and there was no perfect one design. So the beauty of that process allows you to highest rank the best two, but to incorporate really the best practices and ideas of the entire process. So it's not set in stone, that first design iteration that was conceptually submitted.
So these last designs that they'll come up with will have all of that incorporated into it?
You know, I won't say all, because it's an evolution process over the six to nine months, but certainly, the major criteria will be addressed during the presentations the first week in July.
Is the central one being presented as the potential, not that we ever do it, but the potential of possibly tearing down the older part and adding on to the new portion that's going to connect the two campuses?
For.
Taken in consideration in that design?
Yes. But from a longer-term consideration. Yes, absolutely.
Do you have, I'm not sure if Dr. Evans, we were talking about it, an update with C W Matthews, or if Mr. McKnight does, about what's going on with, if we're still on target for the Supermound at Lambert? You were going to add it on to this update?
Mr. McKnight, may I have an update, but end of the month is the last we heard?
Yes, sir. I spoke with him this week, and they said they're on for the end of the month.
All right, so we're still on target, then, to do our part to have it done by school opening?
We're going to do our best.
Thank you. Much needed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And now, we have Mr. Dan Jones with the financial report.
Okay, we have tonight the financial report for the month ending May 31, 2014. Started the month with $60 million, 265,000. Our revenues for the month were $16.9 million. Expenses, $14.7 million for accounts payable and $11 million for payroll, total of $25 million, 775, leaving us a balance of $51 million, 432,190. And this is almost $3 million less than the same time last year. Budget didn't show up. Well, anyway.
We've got ours, we could go to it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it up here. I think Avalon Tax, if I remember right, we were almost right at 100% collections with a couple of months to go. Expenditures were overall about 91 or 92%, and that's right in line with where we should be. And talking with Rick and doing some projections, we will probably, expenditures be about 1% below budget. And revenues were going to be 1% or 2% above what we had projected.
It's on the main finance, it's under E, not instead of other.
Oh, that's why I didn't see it earlier.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the way it is.
That's right.
Certain ones are.
I can't see it, so.
Yeah, we've got it.
Okay. But everything's right in line with where we should be. I think we're doing very well budget-wise. Again, here's a list of checks that were written, and we can get any information you need on that. Sales tax, we collected $2,634,803 this month, which was $11,721 less than last month, almost a half a percent, but it's almost 10% higher than this time last year. So, you know, I can't explain sales tax. But we did get $7,755 in the pro-rata distribution that comes in. They try to do it quarterly. And again, that's money that they can't identify where it goes. So everybody that's got sales tax gets a piece of it.
Just amazing.
It's not as bad as usually.
They're auditors.
Give you a picture, this is what it looks like. You can see sales tax, you know, since we started this one from the inception, it's been fairly flat, except for two peaks right around Christmas time. The O seven bond, we earned $810 in interest, and there's $7,000, $7,300,000 left in that one. And the O five, there's $294 in interest, and we did spend some of this, $640,000 that we moved to capital projects, and there's 2.3 million left there. And again, these are the two amounts that are obligated for Brandywine. You'll see that in this capital projects. We've got the Brandywine set up. The budget that we're showing here is $19.4 million, and there is a little over $2 million in the bond, in the 14 bond, but this is coming out of the locals, since we don't have all the 14 stuff here yet. We're going to get $9.5 million from the state, and the balance will come out of local And debt service, made a payment in May of almost $6 million, you can see that. And there's $17.8 million in the checking account, and $18.9 in our investment account. So we've got a total of $36.8 million, and there will be a couple of payments coming up here at the end of the year, first part of August. So, and we don't have a school this month, because most of the bookkeepers are out, summer break. So it'll probably be August before we get one from everybody. But that's the financials for the month, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. But that's the financials for the month, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have questions? So, are we ready to move on to the action item, the final budget approval?
Okay. We had tentative approval last month, and we did advertise the budget in the papers we are required to do. We finally got a final QB&E op sheet, so we've got the final numbers there. And just today, about 12 o'clock, I got a digest. It was supposed to be the final one. So, we went to work trying to get that, and I gave you some information. Let me go through this first, and then we'll, we'll get that. What you're going to see in this is we've updated these numbers based on the digest that we got today. And the digest, when I get into the detail, you'll see, is actually going to bring in about $2 million less than what we were given to work with before.
That's not good.
So, without changing anything else, that we plug that into the amount we'd have to pull out of reserves, and that deficit is now $9.6 million that will have to come out. We originally brought the budget to you, I think it was a little over $7. So, this is what it would look like as it currently is with this digest. Excuse me. Again, just going through it quickly, the expenditure side hasn't changed, we didn't do anything there, and again, it's, you know, almost 90% salaries and benefits, and the rest is operations. This is what it looks like, give you a picture form of it. You can see the biggest piece, as it should be, is in instruction. And this is where, again, breakdown between salaries and operations. General fund, the Avalon, we're working with $16.3 mils, which is our current middle rate and has been for seven years. You can see the net digest is actually a little bit higher than what we were originally given, but what changed was the exemptions.
Exemptions, that's what I was looking at.
The exemptions. You know, I was working with last year's exemptions because the figure that I first had, I knew wasn't right, but I had no idea that they did go up. It looks like it's over $100 million.
I think it was, I think we ran the numbers about 15%.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's a reflection of the older...
17%.
Yeah, the older age is going to start hitting us more and more.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be a part of it. So, our net available revenue, actually back out the commission to collect our taxes, is 3.3 million, is $129,634,000, and we were $131 million before.
And just to clarify, that 2.5% commission goes to the county for the pleasure of taking care of the money?
And the QB&E with our, is $157 million, and we bumped up the midterm adjustment for $6 million, so we're looking at $163 million from the state. Just a breakdown of how that looks when you graphically put it out there. And these are the increases for salary benefits, again, 111 new positions that are school-based, that are certified. The classified actually nets out to zero, and there's 10 non-school-based, which is social workers and drivers and bus mechanics. That hasn't changed. Debt services, you know, this is the same as what we presented to you before. Go back. Anyway, the other was capital outlay, it hasn't changed. Food service did change, because there was, while we found an error in some of her numbers, and now she will be taking out 235 out of her reserves, 235,000.
Is this for 2015, or is that correct?
Yes.
2014? Well, she's got 2014?
Yeah, it's...
Out in her numbers, but I thought...
Yeah, it's, it's the 2015 budget. That just didn't get changed.
Okay.
And her meal prices, again, she's going to leave them the same. Now, what I gave you, these are pages, the first two are pages to be put in your binder that we gave you. You can replace those pages with this information. But don't move so fast, because here's the other part. I had a message just a little while ago from the county saying that there are some errors in some of the exemptions, and that they will give us new numbers tomorrow. It's not going to be a big amount. They said it should be a little positive.
Maybe, maybe they are.
Yeah, here we go. And so, we should get some new numbers tomorrow, but I don't look forward to change a whole lot. We're still going to be pretty close to where we are now. So, you know, you can hold off on those pages, we'll get you some updates as soon as we get the numbers. The other, the next two are, I showed you the comparison between, this is just from our budget ad that we, I mean, the five-year ad that we'd have to run, and I left an extra year in there, because there's actually six years here comparing it. But you can see that our net M&amp;O revenue is $129,634, which is a 4.7% increase over last year. And if you look back to 2008, 2009, we actually generated more revenue in those years with fewer students than we are right now.
So, the property ratios are going up, but they certainly have not gone to the level they were in the past.
Correct. They haven't recovered from the down years. And so, but you got maintenance operation and the bond, I did both of them for you to, to look, and they're both, you know, the growth is 4.7%. And then I gave you a copy of the actual digest, which we'll have to get you a new one. And then the other page is, the amount that's, the digest has increased because of reassessment. That's the $85,951,000 figure. And that's important when we do the rollback calculation. And the last two pages I gave you are the rollback calculations for the M&amp;O and the bond. And the, what you want to look at is about halfway down, under the computation of percentage increase, the rollback rate is 16.128 mils, and we are currently at 16.3 mils. So, it is an increase of 1.07%. So, what that means is that we will have to have three hearings.
Right.
So, we will, once we get the final, final numbers and know what it really is, then we'll look at, getting some dates on the calendar. It's quite a process to go through to, to have these hearings, but we will manage it. And we'll start trying to get the ads together and get that advertised, and we'll get that out to you as, as soon as we can get some final numbers to look at.
That has to be done by when? That middle rate's...
Uh, it has to be done at the state by August 1st.
August 1st. So, we have to have the meetings before June, before June, is that you're right?
We don't have...
No, you don't have to have them before June, but...
That's right.
And it's almost impossible to have them in June, because we've only got, what, a week and a half left? And you've got to have a week in between meetings, and they have to be advertised a week ahead of time, so, you know...
There's a lot of rules.
If need be, if we end up having that meeting on the 30th, could that become on? Because we only have a work, we don't have a work session in July. We only have a public in July.
Net suite, but that's, we don't have...
Yeah, that might be too soon, but the 30th might be able to become an official.
Yeah, if we can get it advertised in time, there's a possibility we could, but that's what I got to do.
Yeah, if the numbers come in, we do have a call meeting then, so if you can do it, that would be great.
Okay. We can probably, we should be able to get one of them in anyway. And the way we've done it in the past, you can have two in one day, you can have one in the morning and then one in the afternoon.
Which might be good to do anyway, if you're working people.
It will really only take two days to have these hearings, but it's, has to be spread out because of the advertising requirements. So, as soon as I get some final numbers, I'll put some, I'll keep that 30th in mind, and we'll try to work around that, and then maybe do one sometime in early July. But that's the information that we have at this time with the budget, and I'd like to recommend to the superintendent that we go ahead and then give final approval to the budget, based on the information that we currently have.
It is recommended that the Versailles County Board of Education approve the final FY2015 budget as presented. We do understand there'll be some slight modifications in the digest, but as far as the general expenditures, those are presented in the budget and should remain accurate, and any variation should be well within tolerance levels as established, I think, in QB, which is 5%.
Right.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations?
Move.
Second.
A motion by Ann and a second by Nancy. Discussion?
I just want to say that if anybody questions, even though we're, that income is $2 million less, that most of the expenditures, to try to adjust those would not, they're positions that we have to have, there are things about putting the three days, which are the, what's in the best interest of students, so we're putting all the days back, and we're giving all the step raises to the teachers, which are things that we need to do.
Right.
So, there wouldn't be any question, I don't think, in my mind, or anybody up there, that we would even consider going back on what we planned.
And I think it's also worth pointing out, the state did put more money in the general budget for education, but it still is not enough to make up for what we're supposed to be getting. And then even if you look at the, I was talking to Mr. Jones today, and thank you, Ms. Norton, because we had lots of questions, but one of the things that stuck out to me in looking at the QB&E, QB&E sheet, the transportation funds. I mean, our enrollment continues to go up, and if you look at the transportation funds, I mean, our growth, we got an extra $160 from the state this year for transportation.
By a ton of gas.
And that lovely. So, if you look at the total number, at 1.4 million for this coming 15, if you look back at, say, fiscal year '12, we got 1.42 million. So, we're still less than we were in 2012, and we've grown a significant number of students, but we did get an extra $160 this year, so that did we that well.
And I think reviewing the history, the five-year, that, that's something I've always reviewed, just been amazed, and thanks to Dr. Evans for the diligent work he's done over the years to maintain that during those times, because, like we said, this has been a wild ride, and it's amazing what we've done with what we've had.
And I know we talked about an increase, but, but now we're $2 million below what we thought we were going to be, right?
Yes.
Okay. The numbers came in just in time, I guess. Anybody else? Okay, we're ready to vote? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
And you can just let us know about the meetings or what we do.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
I'll get dates out to you, and we'll try to work around that June 30th meeting.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Oh, you're still up.
Yeah, y'all can't get rid of me that easy.
Resolution declaring election results.
We'll take those.
Okay, we have, this is one of the things we have to do to move forward with our selling of some bonds. The county election board has already declared the election ballots, and they passed their resolution. And this is just a resolution stating that the election was held, that total votes cast were 21,446. Yes votes were 13,642, and no's were 7,804. And recommend that superintendent recommend that we go ahead and pass this resolution declaring the election results.
It is recommended that the Versailles County Board of Education approve the resolution declaring the election results for the 2014 bond referendum.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy. Any discussion? Except we're just thankful, right?
Just very happy that we have the community's support.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to talk about?
Well, and I'll have some things for you to sign before we go into executive.
Okay. Next, we have points of information with Dr. Evans.
I am delighted to, once again, recognize the Versailles County Board of Education for being Georgia's first-place winner and the best use of the meetings module. I'm sure most people realize, but I'm also sure a lot of people don't realize, that we have a number of meetings that are kept up using the GSBA's meeting module, we call eBoard, including all of our Board of Education meetings, which has all the information that our board has available, public and online for our personnel. But not only that, over the years, we are, we've grown to all of our administrative meetings, our school council meetings. Literally a phenomenal job. A lot of people have worked to do this, I really want to point out the work that Valerie Hall has done in terms of training, but all of our schools working to get their personnel working. So, this is really a tool that's being used, not only by our board, but literally at every level throughout the school district, and being recognized by the state, first-place winner. And Crowe had an opportunity to pick this trophy up in Savannah last week at GSBA, and you should be very proud of a very progressive modeling of how you use technology to manage the information that's a part of our board meetings, school council meetings, administrative meetings, and a number of other things that we do within the school district. So, congratulations.
Thank you. When I first came on, I've got a story, but just for how far we've come, when I talked to the guy that was before me, he said, "Oh, and you get this big packet of paper that they deliver to you." And thank goodness we have eBoard, and the information is so much easier to acquire and study.
And along with that, did also come a check for $750. I understand Ms. Crowe's already acquired that for the purchase of a new Rattan. So, I don't know what happened to the $750, but we had a big check to go along with all of that.
It was $2 million that Dan...
Yeah.
It all adds up.
Alrighty.
Anything else for the points of information?
Okay. Alrighty, now we need to go into executive session for personnel and real estate. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Ann. All in favor?